Discuss things. You know, instead of. If I disagree with you, you're instantly my enemy. And I'm therefore allowed to do anything I want to you because you offended me.
Audibly from one of our.
You know, when I was in high school. If two people got into an argument after school, they met in the parking lot, they duked it out. Then they shook hands. And it was over with.
Sounds good for here.
Nowadays, you gotta have all your friends jump.
Thank you, Scott. That was a little bit low. Do you mind coming back on real quick?
Sure thing.
Okay, we'll work on the volume in here. Thank you.
Okay.
Peter, how are you doing? Yeah, I was watching Poe for a little bit. I'm trying not to multitask too bad. Ooh, I need to move that because I'm definitely. We're gonna cover me up. What a long day. That really sucked about Chicago this morning, Peter. I know you're on audits page a lot. She's gonna, I don't think she's gonna stream tonight. But she's gonna be doing public comment here also. And Serge may drop in. I don't know. I I told him about it, but he's in different meetings today. So we'll see. It's about time to start hitting these other cities and making them feel the heat. That's for sure. Yeah, I was so aggravated this morning about that. It just totally ticked me off that they didn't call on me. And I had my, I had registered, I had my hand raised, I had everything right, I think. Yeah, I don't know if that it was intentional, cuz they didn't call on any of the callers online. So I think they just don't know what the hell they're doing with online co- public comment. You you would think that they would, but you know. You never know. You would think for a city as big as as Chicago that they would have more than five in person and five online. And that's the rule even for the regular city council. That's ludicrous. They should drop it down to two minutes and you know, give it a timeframe of forty-five minutes or an hour. Peter, you're in that area, aren't you? How do I make this bigger? In this, in the Salt Lake City one, they have a two P M. Executive Committee meeting. And then they have the public meeting at seven. So their work session is for a couple hours, then they take a dinner break. And the clerk's assistant just emailed me to say they're just getting back, so hopefully they'll start on time. That would be nice. And e- even though I've got my OBS up and running now. I kind of figured out how to use it. It's not that hard. I may play with it a little bit. I figured out my problem on my audio. Cuz my audio, I couldn't get it to work. I'd log in my StreamYard on my whatever it was, my other platform. And I could never hear when I played videos on Chrome cuz you can't use the the same one. And it was because the two different platforms couldn't, they were fighting each other for the microphone in the audio. So I figured it out. Actually, I didn't figure it out. Crazy Loves figured it out. She helped me figure it out. That's nuts cuz we've been trying to figure it out. I've been trying to figure it out on my own. Even had Henry helping me trying to figure it out. And he gave me a wonky setup. So if I was on my platform. And then I opened my StreamYard, so then I'd have to open the Zoom. And then open the Zoom on my phone. And then put the phone as it was playing. All right. Yeah, I knew you had something to do with it, Peter. I could just tell. Yep. Excuse me. So then you know about WIBs. Workforce man, investment boards. It it is best, but excuse me. Hey, Swedish Alina. But unfortunately, some of these bigger boards, trying to get the time of day is is difficult. I know that's how we ended up getting through to LAPD. Is through the uh through the Commission Board. And then we use the Commission Board to springboard to the O I G. And I know that's the easiest way to do it is to meet face to face. Ask for a half an hour of time, ask for an hour. That's how we got to them is please.
This is a brief test of the audio system to confirm that I'm getting the Zoom room. If I could get an audible confirmation from my Zoom attendees, please, my Zoom panelists.
Sounds good on Zoom.
Sounds good on Zoom.
Just another quick test here in the room of the audio. If I could get an audible sound from the panelists.
Yep, testing one, two, three, testing one, two, three.
It is, Peter, and it's to their benefit to meet with you personally because they can hear you. And it's actually your benefit too, because they can see your face. They can see your tone. Just like texting and on the phone, it's hard. It's sometimes hard to convey everything just in the sound of your voice. Peter, do you ever watch those LAPD ones or the the L A City Council ones? I I think, I mean, I'm almost embarrassed for the people that speak that way. You know, I know there's always the shock value. But that only goes so far.
This is an audio test to confirm we have audio in the room at the appropriate level. And from the Zoom attendees. Taylor, thanks for doing our testing and your patience. If you could do it one more time for me, please. Phillip, I cannot hear, I hear her faintly. If there's any way to turn that up a little bit, thank you.
Sorry, Peter, I was just making sure I didn't get cock caught on a hot mic. That's the District One Commander, right? Nor should he. Or he. You know, half those words they use in those L A meetings, the N and the C word and the B word. Uh F word, I, as I said, I I personally think those are disrespectful. And I, if I was on the other side of the table, I'm not gonna listen to you. I'm gonna close my ears. You just turned me off so bad. You know, I I use those words, don't get me wrong. But not in a public setting. You don't talk that way, the like you would, you would never talk that way to your grandma. You have to show respect. If you want respect, you have to show respect.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to today's meeting. Uh, we're happy to have you here, whether you're joining us in person or online. We hope you'll continue to participate in whichever manner you feel most comfortable. Um, so we're going to start by uh reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll join me in doing that.
I can't hear it either, you guys.
All right, thank you. Uh, before we move through the agenda, I want to explain our updated general comment registration process and remind everybody about the rules of decorum for council meetings. Individuals may register to comment on scheduled public hearing items until the hearing is closed. For the general comment section, we will accept signups until seven thirty P M. The general comment section has been changed to one hour. If you're here to give general comments, not everyone who signed up may be able to speak. I would like to run through our meeting rules. These are designated, uh, or excuse me, designed so that we can conduct city business, ensure that the meeting is safe, orderly, and free from intimidation. We will not be giving multiple warnings about the following rules, so uh please pay attention to these. Uh, to keep our reactions from affecting your ability to share your opinion freely, council members refrain from reacting or responding to uh comments and sharing our end uh opinions freely when you're giving comments to us. When making your comments, please address the full body, the city. Don't direct your comments to any one elected official. Uh, if you have a handout for the council, please do not approach the dais. And that's this up here. If you would, just uh raise your hand and staff will come assist you and pass out um the papers for you. Council staff are available during or after the meeting to help with any questions or information sharing. Avoid the use of threatening and discriminatory language. Do not insult others based on religion and ethnicity, race, color, gender, sexual orientation, physical ability, et cetera. Well, when you, whether you agree or disagree with someone's comment, clapping, cheering, shouting, booing, snapping, gesturing, obstructing, or discouraging others from commenting is not allowed. The full meeting rules are listed at the door and staff uh also has a link available for those of you joining us electronically. This brings us to item A one, which is approving the work session meeting minutes of August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, as well as the formal meeting minutes of August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and September third, twenty twenty four, and the truth and taxation meeting minutes of August thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
More for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve those uh uh by Councilmember Dugan, a second from Councilmember Petro. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono Absent. Um, our next agenda is item A five, which is to consider adopting a joint ceremonial resolution with Mayor Mendenhall declaring the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Salt Lake City. I'm going to turn the time over to Councilmember Lopez Chavez, who's going to read the the resolution.
Thank you, Chair. Joint resolution declaring the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Salt Lake City. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in nineteen seventy seven by a delegation of Native Nations to the United Nations sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas Salt Lake City recognizes the city is built upon the homelands of the indigenous peoples of this region, whose histories are intertwined with the settlement of Salt Lake City. And whereas Salt Lake City established its Human Rights Commission in two thousand and five, committing itself to protect, respect, and fulfill the full range of inherent human rights for all as set forth in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and numerous other international human rights treaties. And whereas Salt Lake City values indigenous peoples' contributions to our community, including sharing their culture and fostering progress in technology, science, philosophy, and arts that substantially shape the character of our city. And whereas Salt Lake City opposes systemic discrimination toward indigenous people in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises. And whereas Salt Lake City supports policies and practices to close the equity gap for indigenous peoples by supporting policies and practices that ensure broader access to resources and opportunities, and by honoring our nation's indigenous roots, history, and contributions. And whereas indigenous communities and tribes in Utah support officially recognizing the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day and celebrate this day to promote understanding and friendship and to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination stemming from colonization. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Salt Lake City Council and Mayor of Salt Lake City strongly support that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the indigenous peoples of our region. Be it further resolved, the Salt Lake City Council and Mayor of Salt Lake City strongly encourage Salt Lake City Public Schools to teach the culture, government, and history of indigenous peoples on this day and encourage residents, businesses, organizations, and public institutions to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. Be it further resolved, the Salt Lake City Council and Mayor of Salt Lake City firmly commit to efforts that promote the well-being and growth of Salt Lake City's American Indian and Indigenous community and declare the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Salt Lake City.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez Chavez. I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt a joint ceremony resolution with Mayor Mendenhall declaring the second Monday in October as Indigenous People Day in Salt Lake City.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Dugan and a second from Councilmember Lopez Chavez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Sorry, was there any discussion to this item? Okay, thank you.
Would you, Chair, would you like to invite um anybody that would like to receive it? Looks like we have a group.
I would. I'd like to invite um um Shelby Chapus. Did I spell that, say that right? Close enough? I'm sorry. Okay, sorry about that. Um, Executive Director of the Indigenous Health and Wellness Connection here uh with us today to receive the resolution. Thank you so much for being here. If you want to say a few words there, and then we'd love to have you come up here and take a photo with us.
Yeah, sure.
Please tell me how that correct pronunciation of your last name.
Yes, so good afternoon, sorry, good evening. My name is Shelby Chapus. I'm the Executive Director for Indigenous Health and Wellness Connections. I'm also Ancompogory Ute. Recently, um, a tribal elder educated me on that the um numerous tribes in the area used to call the Salt Lake Valley many homes, indicating that we have always been here. And so the city of Salt Lake is on what we will, what will forever be indigenous land. So I thank you for taking this step forward and acknowledging that. I look forward to assisting in the continuation of the progress that this motion will have for my communities. I also want to acknowledge all of my relatives and those that have come before me in their in their continuous, in their continuous work to move forward education, equity, and health. Thank you.
Thank you. And would you and anybody else in your group like to come and get a photo with us? Okay, come on up here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Pui.
Thank you. Uh, I know that you asked for, uh, if we had any um personal privilege time, will you allow me a thirty second note?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I, you know, and uh for the last few years that I joined the council uh and uh and the opportunity to learn more about my own uh blood and my own roots. Um, and as I shared last year, uh, I uh confirmed, while I knew from my own skin uh over the many, many years uh that uh the 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 great majority of myself is uh of native blood. Uh, and I was raised in an environment that's uh shamed, uh shamed, you know, my origins, uh, and shame my my roots. While uh the tribes that I belong uh don't exist anymore, uh, in in uh as organized tribes in in my home country. Uh, I like to take this moment to highlight the sufferings of of many that came before us. Uh, and the fights that uh we carry, um, and sometimes we carry them in our own blood. So thank you uh for those that pushed for this resolution. Uh, thank you uh Eva and the rest of the council for passing this resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Pui. Any other discussion? All right, thank you. This brings us to the council public comment section of our agenda, uh, which are uh, which is your opportunity to comment on specific proposals that are before the council that require a public hearing. And your comments do need to pertain to the hearing topic. If your comments go off topic, we will ask you to stop. This will serve as your only warning for this issue. If you would like to comment on these public items today, we are accepting comments in person and online on Zoom. You can sign up to comment until the hearing is closed. If you need to speak with our staff, please raise your hand in the room or on Zoom and ask a staff person to assist you. For those of you in Zoom, our staff person, Isaac Kenedo, can assist with the registration uh with registration issues or technical questions. Taylor Hill on our staff will be calling those who have signed up to comment based on the order in which we received your names. If you're on Zoom, please unmute your mic when Isaac calls your name. Each person will have two minutes, and we will call on each person who has signed up to speak. Just as a reminder, our goal is to create uh and keep a safe space for everyone to to share and participate in the meeting. So please do follow the public comment rules when making your remarks. Disruptions or threats to anybody's safety are not allowed and uh are prohibited. If anyone uses discriminatory language, curses, or uh a disruption occurs, we will pause your comments to remind you about the rules of decorum before you continue. Okay. So and a few, let's see. I don't think I need to get into that. Okay, let's go to um Capital City Revitalization Zone Participation Agreement Project Area and citywide point oh five percent sales and use tax uh follow-up. This is um item B one on the agenda. I know we have people here to comment, so. Oh. Thanks, Nick. So before we take the comments, um, we're gonna have Nick um Tarbit from our staff, who is going to give a short introduction on this issue, and then we'll take public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Earlier this year, the state legislature passed Senate Bill two seven two, which established the process and timeline for creating a revitalization district centered around the Delta Center and Convention Center blocks of downtown Salt Lake City. The projects become known as the Sports Entertainment Culture and Convention District. The councils worked with the Smith Entertainment Group on a participation agreement as outlined in the state statute requires. After the public hearings in June and July of this year, the council endorsed the participation agreement, which it was then sent to the State Revitalization Committee for review. That committee has unanimously approved the endorsed project area and participation agreement. Tonight's hearing, the council will consider, after tonight's hearing, the council will consider adopting a resolution approving the final Capital City Revitalization Zone Project Area and participation agreement between Salt Lake City and the Smith Entertainment Group, as well as the, as well as an ordinance establishing a point five percent citywide sales tax.
Thank you, Nick. Now we'll go to our first commenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have about thirty-seven people registered to speak to this item. The first will be Scott Johnson, followed by Natalie Gockner, and then Patrick Zunk. The first will be Scott Johnson, followed by Natalie Gockner, and then Patrick Zunk. Scott is here in person.
Hi, I'm Scott Johnson, and my career focus since completing an MBA at Carnegie Mellon University has been understanding and influencing consumer and retailer behavior at Fortune 500 companies. I've also consulted with a Harvard economics professor on the concepts I'll be presenting. Tonight, I'm here to raise significant unintended consequences the tax increase could have, both financial and political, and to urge you to delay your vote pending further analysis. The biggest risk here is something called tax elasticity of border sales, a dynamic experience, for example, in cities along the Oregon-Washington border, where tax increases on one side drive consumers and businesses to spend on the other. Proceeding without analysis of a tax that will be a full 100 basis points higher versus neighboring cities will put Salt Lake City's own existing sales tax base at risk. We're not talking about a minor issue here, but the important funding our futures, future program. It depends on sales tax revenue that will suffer consequences for all citizens if lost to West Valley City, South Salt Lake, North Salt Lake, or beyond. The rushed timeline created by the legislature and Smith Entertainment clearly didn't allow enough time for these concepts and risks to crystallize and be analyzed, and that's a major problem. Another economic concept to understand in this context is moral hazard. Specifically, the state and SEG have little to lose if this tax drives sales out of Salt Lake. The state will still collect its portion of sales tax no matter where the purchases are made, inside or outside the city, and SEG will have already secured their financing. Meanwhile, you and Salt Lakers alone will bear the brunt of any tax revenue erosion. You are the ones who will answer to voters, a large majority of whom are opposed to the tax for local reporting. Those of you seeking office next year will depend on the votes of Salt Lakers, not SEG, not the legislature, and how well you protected their best interests. Given these concerns, I strongly urge you to postpone a vote until a thorough analysis is conducted.
Time.
Thank you. If you didn't get a chance to finish your comments, you can email the rest of us, the rest of them to us, and they will be part of the public record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Gockner. I'm an economist and lifelong resident of the Salt Lake Valley. I'm here tonight to support the downtown sports, entertainment, culture, and convention district. I want to speak specifically to people who are on the margin or edge or have uncertainty about this proposal. I've asked myself five questions, which I'd like to share with you. The first is, what other plan do we have to attract $3 billion of private investment to our capital city core? Second question, what plan, what other plan do we have to secure legislative support, something that is not common in this town to get legislative support for Salt Lake City? Third, what other plan do we have as a community to ensure the long-term viability and support for the future of the Utah Jazz and the Utah Hockey Club in our urban core? A fourth question would be, what other plan do we have to secure ticket fees that will help with affordable housing, workforce development, historic preservation? And then finally, what other plan do we have as a community to ensure that we get all of these benefits and make it so that businesses and non-residents pay 75% to 80% of the public participation? Importantly, and this is so key to the proposal, that groceries and large purchases are exempt from the sales tax increase. From 1960 to 1990, this city lost population. It turned around, we gained in 2000, 2010, and 2020. That was because of investment in tracks, frontrunner, Echols Theater, City Creek Center, and more. City building is a relay race. Don't drop the baton. Let's stay focused and unified and invest in this incredible city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next will be Patrick Zunk, followed by Rocky Anderson, and then Jeannie Uemoto. Patrick, you may now unmute.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Patrick Zunk, and I'm a constituent of District One. I stand in firm opposition to this ordinance. I'm reminded of that phrase that often gets loaded as a criticism of runny capitalism, where people say privatize the gains, socialize the losses, except in this case, it's privatize the gains, socialize the investment. It is not reasonable to demand that working middle-class residents of this city pay for this project, especially those who either don't have interest or the means to attend a pro hockey game or this project's other offerings. Local officials have put out numerous statements extolling this project and its alleged benefits, but the figures are dubious at best, and there's a lot of, well, just trust me kind of logic to it, especially given the long and proven track record of development projects like this have taken from all and given to a select few. The people of this city, who I would remind the council, are your employers, deserve better than to be sold out like this, so I encourage a no vote on this ordinance and instead find an alternate route to fund this project. Thank you.
And next will be Rocky Anderson, followed by Jeannie Uemoto, and then Andrew Marwick. Rocky is here in person.
Good evening, Rocky Anderson. There are times when we're called upon to make decisions that might upset powerful people, but which we know are grounded in integrity. Most of your community is overwhelmingly opposed to the sales tax increase, and your subsidy of Smith Entertainment Group with $900 million of the people's money. The Planning Commission unanimously voted against this project. A Deseret News poll shows that Utah voters are opposed to this sort of deal by 54 to 38%. You all talk about how you listen to your community, your constituents. Well, something you haven't disclosed to the public is that 96% of publicly written comments the council has received are opposed to the tax increase and subsidy, and over 96% of calls to the county, council office are opposed to the SEG subsidy. Are you going to allow a billionaire sports team owner to threaten to pick up his marbles and go elsewhere unless he gets to essentially pick all of our pockets, take public money, and use it for his own purposes, and in so doing, take control of over 1,000 acres of our downtown area, turning the public sphere, where we all have our First Amendment rights, into his private fiefdom, garish jumbotrons and all? If you can't say no to this oppressive deal, then we the people will do it for you. If you pass this heinous ordinance tonight, we the people will run a referendum. We will get enough petition signatures to get the matter on the ballot, then we will overturn your ordinance. Those who want to join this referendum campaign are urged to leave us their names and contact info.
All right, thank you. If you refrain from clapping or reacting, thank you.
Next will be Andrew Marwick, followed by Jessica. Oh, if Jeannie's here in person, I have her mark as online.
Nope, she's here.
Thank you. My name is Jeannie Uemoto. I'm a member of the Japanese Christian Church of Christ and a trustee at the church, but I also have been working on Japantown since the early 2000s with Judge Uno and others, and it was called the Japanese Community Preservation Committee. I just wanted to say that, you know, back in the 2000s, Lincoln Shirts actually helped me with legislation on Japantown before I was in public office, and I, I just wanted to say with regard to SEG, who he works with now, Mike Mon has listened as well, and he has responded, and he's continuing the dialogue with the community, which I really appreciate. Our churches and community will be impacted, there's no question. But through the years, I wanted to thank our Salt Lake City mayors and county and city councils, and also our present Salt Lake City mayor, our council, and SEG for working to preserve and hopefully lessen the impact that we'll have, and hopefully bring back a sense of what was lost in this beautiful and, you know, thriving Japantown that once was. So I just wanted to say that, and I, I feel like also the state and county has that support as well as preserving, so thank you very much.
You.
And next will be Andrew Marwick, followed by Jessica Thiesing, and then Brandon Fugel. Andrew, you may now unmute.
Okay, okay, thank you. Having dealt with the situation in Glendale, Arizona for the last 15 years, and all the trials and tribulations they went through, Salt Lake City is following in the footsteps of making a huge mistake. In March 2001, Glendale thought they had pulled off the ultimate coup, stealing the Coyotes from Scottsdale. The slogan was coined "Glendale is the new Scottsdale." Fate took a lucky turn for Glendale on September 11th. The FAA panicked and nixed the Cardinal Stadium in Tempe, and Glendale won the Cardinal Stadium in three Super Bowls so far. The arrival of the Cardinals is what sparked development at Westgate. No development occurred before the NFL arrived in Glendale. Things didn't go so well with the Coyotes. Leases and guarantees usually don't survive bankruptcy, and the Coyotes leased in Glendale didn't. The Coyotes were close to moving to Canada in 2009. Only the NHL purchased of the Coyotes and kept the Coyotes in Glendale. The NHL then demanded $25 million a year from Glendale. This was the start of a 15-year nightmare in Glendale. Fortunately, the Coyotes are now moving further away from Glendale. Having an NBA and NHL team in a city the size of Salt Lake is extremely risky, and Salt Lake City taxpayers shouldn't take the risk without a public vote. Other cities such as Murray and Sandy, as the other commenter said, can advertise their lower sales tax. The timeline is, this timeline is not realistic. There are far too many loose ends to finalize the agreement and the tax increase. Ryan Smith paid a roughly $500 million profit to Alex Morello, who ran the Coyotes into the desert sand. Salt Lake taxpayers deserve a direct vote on this tax increase. Thank you.
Next will be Jessica Thiesing, followed by Brandon Fugel, and then Jeanette Bennett. She's here in person.
Good evening, council. My name is Jessica Thiesing. I'm the Deputy Director of the Downtown Alliance and affiliate of the Salt Lake Chamber. The Salt Lake Chamber is the state's largest and longest-serving business association. It is the capital city in name and statewide in its mission. The Downtown Alliance serves as an important and specific purpose to ensure the vitality and vibrancy of the downtown economy and community. I am pleased to represent both organizations and add our voice of strong support for this project, which will do much to ensure the continued prosperity of our capital city. We appreciate the diligence of Mayor Mendenhall, the council, and Smith Entertainment Group in negotiating the agreement terms. We believe these ambitious public investments will enhance the region's social, cultural, and economic health. Convention, sports, and arts entertainment are major drivers in the downtown economy. Downtown is the right place for a multifaceted entertainment district. Losing the sports, culture, and convention audiences would be devastating to downtown's economy and weaken the core of our regional economy. Downtown stakeholders want these revitalization efforts to succeed. They want the proposed new assets to be integrated with the existing commercial nodes and arts assets. An entertainment district cannot stand alone. They want to be involved in the planning and execution of these investments. Downtown stakeholders have valuable experience developing and operating downtown. Collectively, they have invested billions in our downtown. We urge city, county, and SEG leaders to engage downtown stakeholders in planning and developing downtown. Tonight, we respectfully ask the city council to approve the participation agreement. Thank you so much.
Next will be Brandon Fugel, followed by Jeanette Bennett, and then Melva Sein. Brandon's here in person.
Thank you. My name is Brandon Fugel. I'm chairman of Colliers International and also on the Board of Trustees of the Utah Symphony, Utah Opera. I also represent the owner of the property on the corner of First South and 300 West that is a critical gateway piece into the sports, entertainment, and cultural district that is being contemplated. I believe this is a legacy opportunity. We have an Olympics in 10 years, along with an incredibly redeveloped Temple Square and surrounding area in order to welcome the world to Utah. This moment is critical to establish downtown and to benefit the state of Utah for generations to come. And as Natalie Gockner, who is one of the most senior economists in the state, outlined in her earlier comments, noted, this proposal contains compelling benefits for our community that will last for generations. I strongly urge support.
And next will be Jeanette Bennett, followed by Melva Sein, and then Stuart Barlow. Jeanette's here in person.
Managing Director of Colliers and a longtime magazine publisher here in this state, both of these roles are focused on economic development of Utah, and as such, I am in support of this revitalization project. I know the principles of Smith Entertainment Group from my work as an entrepreneur and as a journalist in this state, and I have chronicled their business success and their generosity, and now I've studied their plans for the beloved downtown Salt Lake that we all care about. I know enough about the metrics to know that they have other options that would be more financially viable and frankly, easier. But true to the character that I've observed for over a decade, they've designed this project for the maximum win, for the maximum number of entities and individuals. Principles of Smith Entertainment Group have been blessed with success in this state, and I applaud their efforts to in turn bless our state with their vision and the dedication to the long-term success of Utah and specifically our downtown. I've heard Mike Mon of SEG describe other cities as unfortunately creating a donut where the development happens on the outside of the metro area while the center of the city crumbles. We have a once-in-a-lifetime or beyond opportunity to support this master plan and create that strong downtown, that strong center dedicated to arts, entertainment, sports, and business. The ripple effect of approving this will yield far-reaching positive results for ourselves, our children, grandchildren, and beyond. I strongly urge you to approve this as currently presented.
Next will be Melva Sein, followed by Stuart Barlow, and then Ryan Barclay. Melva's here in person.
Thank you, council, representing Mayor Mendenhall. I'm here tonight to speak to you about this issue. My name is Melva Sein. I'm the current president of the Utah Restaurant Association. I do want us to think about ways that we can pray for and help our American citizens who have been in the tragedy related to the hurricane and tornadoes that have happened in, on the East Coast, so I hope we're thinking about all of those people as well. I thank you for the opportunity to be here. The Utah Restaurant Association, its board has voted that we support the efforts that have been put forth to keep a Bravanel Hall. We think there's been a lot of effort put forth to make sure that we do that. We support the efforts for planned and sustainable growth in the downtown Salt Lake area, which we believe this will add to our, to our community and reason people want to come and live here and enjoy what we offer. We also support the efforts to collaborate with some of Utah's most skilled and talented entrepreneurial business leaders who are in charge at the Smith Entertainment Group. So we have knowledge and experience. These people are not going out to create a mass project and not have the experience and the knowledge of having done these types of things in other areas, so we can depend on their success, working with our elected officials at the state and local level. So we basically are saying that we support this project. We know the Olympics are coming, and that's amazing. Thank you for all your work that you've done to make that happen. But it's not too soon for us to move forward with large-scale projects that will enhance the future of Salt Lake and the state of Utah for our residents and our visitor. Thank you.
Next will be Stuart Barlow, followed by Ryan Barclay, and then Chris Nelson. Stuart's here in person.
Well, thank you to, for offering a thought or two about this important issue. I know everybody's keenly involved. I'm Stuart Bartle, a member of the legislature, and also a board member of the Utah Symphony, Utah Opera. And I think this topic has been well exposed, and I think we understand the facet of it. Hopefully, I can bring a couple of other points. One is, this draws more than just Salt Lake. This is a statewide endeavor. In fact, I could argue- In fact, I could argue that in Davis County, they can probably get downtown quicker than people out in Sandy, uh, Draper, any surrounding area. Uh, the same thing will hold true for this venue. We need something great. We need something, uh, you know, legendary, something that, uh, will be here for hundreds of years past us. And I think the plans that have been set forth will accomplish a lot of this. We need something to help stimulate and educate our populace, um, especially our kids. And the partnerships that are formed here are, are vital to that effort, especially with the Utah Symphony, Utah Opera. Uh, you know, some of the projects they have undergone or have helped, uh, you know, countless number of people throughout Utah. The Mighty Five Campaign, Symphony traveled throughout the state. They also come to most every school programs that involve, uh, bringing in the orchestra as well. But, uh, I just want to extend my, my full support for this. You know what? If they can't do it, and they, they walk, you know, the state now has a billion-dollar-plus piece of property, then I'm sure we can find something to do. But I, I have great faith that they-
Time.
Thank God.
Next is Ryan Barclay, Chris Nelson, and then Steve Price. Ryan Barclay's here in person.
My name's Ryan Barclay. I represent a company called Impact Utah. We're a nonprofit organization, um, working with manufacturing, healthcare, and construction companies, uh, that drive economic development throughout the state. Um, I think the merits and value of a professional sports team are well-known and well-documented as the history of the Jazz has, has proven to us. I think an A H L team will bring similar benefits to the city and the state. Um, but where those teams are located matters. Uh, at this point in time, there are many forces pulling, uh, people and capital away from city centers across the country, and Salt Lake City is no exception. Um, so the economic health of Salt Lake City has a halo effect, good or bad, uh, on everyone, not only in the city, but in surrounding communities and throughout the entire state. Um, so a healthy, an economically healthy Salt Lake City is actually essential to the success of all Utah businesses and residents. And, uh, it is in and of itself a billboard for the state. It's our position that the economic benefits we get from the participat-, from the participation agreement will be accelerated, multiplied, um, as both professional sports teams will remain located in downtown Salt Lake area. And for this reason, we are in support of the participation agreement. Thank you.
Next will be Chris Nelson, followed by Steve Price, and then Jeff Novak. Chris is here in person.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, my name is Chris Nelson. I'm the Chief University Relations Officer for the university, and I'm speaking on behalf of President Taylor Randall, who's traveling internationally for the university. Uh, I'm here to share the president's enthusiasm and for the project as well as, um, some context from the university. So as a vibrant capital city with an urban center that features world-class sports, entertainment, culture, and arts venues, it's a tremendous value to the University of Utah. For our students, it can mean economic and job opportunities. And for many of our scholars, scientists, researchers, and healthcare providers, it represents a community where they want to live and work. As you know, the university is embarking on its own strategic master planning process to meet President Randall's bold vision of a residential campus with what he calls college town magic. The university itself has invested in downtown Salt Lake City as part of the plan, a plan that we think complements the important generational investment being considered tonight. Uh, the U is grateful to the city council, Mayor's Mendenhall and Wilson, state leaders, and the leadership of the Smith Entertainment Group for their thoughtful consideration of Salt Lake City's future. We appreciate the engagement of key stakeholders, including the University of Utah, and look forward to continued partnership. Thank you.
Next will be Steve Price, followed by Jeff Novak, and then Kate Little. Steve's here in person.
So my name is Steve Price. I live in Salt Lake City. I was born in Salt Lake City. I live in the same zip code I was born in. That's pretty unusual. Um, for a living, I develop industrial buildings in the Northwest Quadrant of Salt Lake City, also preserve urban core buildings. Um, in the community, I serve as trustee at the University of Utah. I serve on the airport board. Thank you for that appointment. I'm also in the bid committee for the Olympics. So if you take that lens and if you took, take that view, what we're talking about is an idea which moves to a project, which moves to the product. So if we talk about the product, the product of, of, of what this entertainment district is, we're only one of 17 cities in America that have an opera, ballet, and symphony. If you had a sports, entertainment, culture, and arts district, we'll be one of the very few in this country. And so on this evolution, we have a powerful anchor in the Northwest Quadrant. The most powerful nutrient is probably Delta Airlines in the Utah economy. The University of Utah adds more DNA and strength and opportunity and upward mobility as another anchor in the city on the east side. And the center will be this development that we're talking about in downtown Salt Lake City. It is vital. It is important. And it's time in the evolution of the city that we move and migrate into what this entertainment district with arts and culture can be. So, um, from my perspective and from a city resident perspective and someone who invests and cares about the city, this is an important project to vote for and get done.
Thank you.
Next will be Jeff Novak, followed by Kate Little, and then Steve Brosbeck. Jeff is here in person.
Hi, Jeff Novak, uh, Fifth District. I'm here to, uh, again, vote no, please, on this sales tax. The reason being that the Olympics are coming here in less than 10 years. The downtown's going to get redeveloped regardless. When the legislature's back in, they're going to allocate funds. The LDS Church has already said they're going to welcome the world, which means they're going to allocate funds. Commercial enterprises are coming in to spend money hand over fist. Did you see the Paris Olympics and all the commercials and all the money that's going to be spent here? Um, over the next 10 years as that builds up? The federal government has money coming in because we are now in Olympics Town. And the state, of course, as soon as they're, they meet at the legislature, this is a state project. It's no longer the Salt Lake Project burdening with a half percent tax increase half of your constituents who cannot afford it and don't want it. This is the white knight. This is your out. There's no reason we need to pass this half percent sales tax. There's beaucoup billions added this way. So I, again, I encourage you, just kill the tax. Vote no. I'm not interested in who you choose to go into business with, but as a taxpayer, we don't need it. We have four new sources of income. Private coming in, we've got commercial coming in, money coming in, federal government money coming in. And mark my words, the Utah Legislature is going to allocate money for the, the grandest parade and party uh, for it to show off Salt Lake in 10 years. Please vote no on the half percent tax increase. It's needless at this point. Thank you.
Next will be Kate Little, followed by Steve Brosbeck, and then Christian Gardner. Kate, you may now unmute.
Hello?
Kate, we're unable to hear you, so I will troubleshoot with you, and you, we will move on to Steve Brosbeck, followed by Christian Gardner, and then Christian Harrison.
Good evening. I'm Steve Brosbeck, President and CEO of Utah Symphony, Utah Opera. We are immensely grateful for all the consideration and support that has been shown in these discussions for the Arts, Japantown, Yumoka, USUO, and Abrahanel Hall. Mayor Wilson has determined that Abrahanel Hall will remain, and we thank her and her team for their work and consideration arriving at this point. We also extend our gratitude to the Revitalization Zone Committee and this council for your work and your preservation of the hall. Abrahanel Hall has been our home and a musical home for everyone in this community since 1979. It has served us well for 45 years. It needs and deserves attention through careful planning to make it ready to serve the community at the highest level for the next 45 years. We need to ensure that Abrahanel Hall is not only preserved, but is fully integrated to the vision of this district to facilitate active engagement with citizens and visitors. One of the greatest challenges is that funds for the preservation or improvements of Abrahanel Hall are not currently available. And the creation of the SCCC district can help keep that consideration top of mind. Utah Symphony, Utah Opera supports the district, knowing that our performances and audience experience benefit from a vibrant downtown core. The gathering of different arts and entertainment lovers in a centralized downtown location will enhance our ability to engage new audiences. Our visibility will expand and new partnerships will develop. We support the district, knowing that our organization will be a cultural cornerstone. We all agree that the foundational presence of the arts makes this district unique from others across the country. A Utah solution that brings people together. We're ready to stay at the table with all of the partners because we believe this district will create new paths toward a vibrant future for Utah Symphony, Utah Opera, and our service community. We encourage everyone to come along with a vision. Thank you.
And next will be Christian Gardner, followed by Christian Harrison, and then Brent Koga. Christian Gardner is here in person.
Christian? Uh, I don't think we have Christian Gardner.
Move on to Christian Harrison, followed by Brent Koga, and then Lani Paulson. Christian Harrison should be in person.
Good evening. I'm Christian Harrison, here on behalf of the Downtown Community Council, on whose board I've served off and on for 18 years. Thank you for allowing us to share our thoughts on the proposed Delta District. We strive to ensure that the voices of our residents are heard in shaping a livable and inclusive downtown. Uh, Salt Lake City, if a sales tax to support this development is inevitable, our goal is clear. Public dollars must yield public and direct and lasting public benefits. We make the following six recommendations. A contingency plan for funding shortfalls. No plan is guaranteed, ever. Salt Lake City must have a robust contingency plan in the event that private funding is ever jeopardized. Part of this plan should ensure that taxable structures aren't demolished unless they will be replaced with equally valuable or improved taxable assets. An 18-hour district demands 18-hour transit. It also requires real street activation along its perimeter, not just the interior. The Delta District can't become an inward-facing sports mall that milks its visitors or funds, uh, of its funds while impoverishing neighboring businesses. Three, there is strong public support for, uh, writing decades of injustice against our Japanese neighbors. And while the GSBS plan, uh, GBSB, excuse me, plan for Japantown is a good start, we urge the city to be much more ambitious, especially in light of the Delta District plans for the area. Four, as public dollars are invested in the Delta District, residential housing for workers and other community members must be prioritized as an integral part of the project. Five, a billion-dollar investment in professional sports should also contribute to active living opportunities for neighbors of the Delta District. Adding a downtown rec center and swim facility, preferably stacked with affordable housing, aligns with the mayor's vision of a family-friendly activity, uh, active city, a true win-win for residents. Six, the-
You can submit the rest of your comments. Thank you so much.
Next will be Brent Koga, followed by Lani Paulson, and then Diata Barta. Brent is here in person.
Hi, thank you for allowing me some time to, um, give you some of my thoughts. Uh, my name's Brent Koga. I'm a member of the Salt Lake Buddhist Temple. You've heard me up here before. I'm also a board member at the Salt Lake Buddhist Temple. Um, my charge as a Salt Lake Buddhist, um, temple board member is to protect the viability and the functionality of the church. On 100 South or Japantown Street, there's two churches there. The Japanese Church of Christ and the Salt Lake Buddhist Temple. Both have been there for over 100 years. Both have been there well before any sports entertainment district. Hopefully, you can help them stay there, thrive, and have the ability to function as religious organizations. Um, I would like to address maybe a couple of things that I still see as maybe lacking in the participation agreement. One of them is in the wording that says minimize truck unloading and loading. Minimizing is still a subjective word. And so does that mean 40 trucks in front of our churches, or does it mean 10? I think the better word would be eliminate. Um, there's also updates of two times per year. We would, we've always wanted a seat at the table. We don't want a seat at the kids' table. We want to actively participate in what's going on on Japantown Street, not be told six months later what we've, what's been done to us. So I appreciate everything that's been done to help the community there. And I think that there should be a way for the Sports Entertainment Culture Convention Center to thrive as well as to protect the two religious, religious organizations. Thank you for your time.
Next will be Lani Paulson, followed by Diata Barta, and then Alia De Angelis. Lani is here in person.
Good evening. My name is Lani Paulson. I'm a retired opera singer. I had my career 35 years in Europe. And therefore, first on my list is Abrahanel Hall. This is an amazing, irreplaceable hall, and any thought of rebuilding it is, is a very bad idea. It has been said that the hall will be preserved. However, I don't see anywhere where there's funding guaranteed for the necessary, uh, improvements and especially for maintenance. It seems to me that this important building in, in Salt Lake needs to be, um, that funding needs to be secured as upfront, not whatever might be left over or worse, tear it down, oh yes, we will rebuild it, but have it be upfront. Um, I was wondering why there is money all of a sudden and willingness to have a half a percent sales tax when all the other important, uh, uh, issues in this city, there is not money for. Homelessness is not going to go to, go away. It will only increase. And what do we do about that? Where is the money then for the major, uh, improvements to the, uh, mass transit so that people can come to these, uh, sports things? The next question is, why, how could, how really, how realistic is it that the sports, uh, budget of families in this area can be doubled? We have the Jazz. Those tickets cost, the cheapest tickets cost a lot. So I checked online. The hockey is also very, very expensive. Utah Symphony has $10 tickets, $12 tickets. Something should be done for the people who will pay for this tax. Thank you.
Next will be Diata Barta, followed by Alia De Angelis, and then Fourvilles Slater. Diata's here in person.
Yeah? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm actually a retired critical care nurse, and I live in the city. And, um, I'm looking at a lot of you, and a lot of you are younger. And, uh, it sounds like a 0.5% sales tax isn't a big deal. But as you live here, year after year after year, every year, there's always a project and something they want to do, and it's just this percent. And we really have higher taxes than we should. It's really a sad situation that we pay tax on food. Um, I think that's an inequity that we, we have in Utah. But we really need to think differently about tax and spend, tax and spend, tax and spend. Because all of us, I live in the city. My property taxes go up every year. Every time I go to the grocery store, um, you know, everything is going up, and I understand why because the world is shaking. Uh, so I just want to say that it sounds really nice to build this big entertainment, uh, facility and make us, you know, one of the upcoming cities in the world. But the problem is, is that the taxes are getting so high that it's hard to live here. So I'm standing for the average citizen, the senior citizen, that says too many taxes. No, we don't want a tax and spend. We don't want this 0.5% tax. And that's all I want to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Alia De Angelis, followed by Fourvilles Slater, and then Christian Gardner. Alia is here in person.
Uh, yes, Alia De Angelis, uh, District 5. As a constituent, a resident, a mother, and a non-business owner, I ask, what about me? What about my son and my neighbors? I ask you vote no on the sales tax increase and funding the S E G group participation agreement. We, the citizens of Salt Lake City, are already overtaxed. Rising zoomers and longtime Salt Lake City residents are priced out. Our property taxes are up by 100%. And our city utilities even more than that. The burns are heavy. And our city utilities even more than that, the burns are heavy. We try to help each other in spite of the over, uh, the existing over taxation. If this is so important, why not tax the entire state given the benefits? It benefits all citizens. Why just us in another request, please stop threatening us with a death spiral which will kill downtown and everything around it. As was said by a council member earlier today. Instead, we need inspiration and an inclusive dream for all, in particular. The home and potential homeowners. Earlier today, you said, you stated you studied other cities at length, yet you ended the sales tax discussion by saying. We are now the standard for standard setter for this kind of agreement. It is my understanding that you are indeed setting the standard for this type of agreement. As three other Utah billionaires are in wait to be, for this to be enacted so they too can ask for the same deal. As you are giving this one billionaire. Utah will quickly become their playground, which we, we, the individuals will be forced to fund. While you have studied other cities, have you studied those who have not caved to proposals like this? We can avoid making the mistakes they have, study Austin, Atlanta, Charlotte, New York City, to name a few. These are a few of the cities who passed through what we are passing through. We don't have to make the same mistakes, but we are. A few cities stopped themselves from selling out with the help of voters and strong city council members, members like yourselves. Austin voted to keep Austin weird. And now they are one of the most desirable cultural and tech hubs in our nation. This is without a sports and entertainment district, study them. They kept their city true to its insights. Don't make us basic, keep Salt Lake City salty. Find other ways, other cities have, study them and please, 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 as a mother, I ask you to vote no.
Next will be Forval Slater, followed by Christian Gardner and then Michelle Corrigliano. Forval is here in person.
Hello, council. Uh, my name is Forbes Slater. I'm a woodworker in the granary and a board member of the Granary District Alliance. Here representing the, the board, um, as well as myself. Uh, it's our opinion that. This um. Revitalization of downtown should be put to a vote, it should be on the ballot. And personally. Um, over the past. Eleven or fourteen years that I've lived here. Um, people just keep coming, you know? The uh, the jazz went thirty one and fifty one last year, and I think that we probably brought in. More people than the year prior. And I don't think that we necessarily need the. Need to increase taxes um, in, in order to keep. People coming to the state. And uh. Even more importantly, this project has just been pushed forward. Very quickly, we're talking about. A thirty year plan that is going to be approved within eight months. And I don't think the public is aware of. You know, exactly where all this money is supposed to go. And I think the right thing to do is to put it to a vote. Thank you.
Next will be Christian Gardner, followed by Michelle Corrigliano and then Bob Minton. Christian is here in person.
Thank you, my name is Christian Gardner, I am a resident and a business owner here in Salt Lake City. I've lived here pretty much my whole life, forty something years and. We as a, and as a resident and as a family member that's cared a lot about the city, we. Encourage you to vote yes on this. The jazz are an integral part of Salt Lake City. And. I know it is a hard decision and I, you know, we don't always like raising taxes, but I think the alternative is much, much worse and you've seen. What's happened over the last couple decades in Salt Lake City as other businesses have chosen to locate elsewhere, you've seen the buildup of. The tech sector outside of Salt Lake City and, and a lot of other prominent. Uh, companies have chosen not to locate here and you don't want to lose the jazz. We want to keep them here in Salt Lake City and this would. This is a great step to the revitalization of downtown. And without it. You're just, um. They'll just go elsewhere and other. And, and nothing really will ever fill that, that void. And so I would encourage the passing of this. It's, it's great vision. I love what he's doing, it's more expensive to build downtown and, and you need help. So that would be my, my vote.
Thank you.
Next will be Michelle Corrigliano, followed by Bob Minton and then Jim Webster, Michelle's here in person.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, my name is Michelle Corrigliano, I represent the Salt Lake Area Restaurant Association. We represent the independent owners of restaurants and bars in Salt Lake County and all of Utah. Um, we support this tax. Um, since COVID, uh, it has drastically affected all of our restaurants and bars in the downtown area. Employees have gone hybrid, uh, or worse, working at home full time. And there's a huge group of people that are just not hitting downtown. Um, right now eighty three percent of the busiest days of our restaurants in the downtown area. Um, have come from conventions, those are not locals, that's not bringing a community together. Um, and it's at the current tax rate, so. We don't see people coming in from all over Utah to come downtown any longer. Before COVID, we did, but we would like to see a revitalized downtown, we think that this will do that for downtown. Um, and as grateful as we are to the conventions, we really want more locals to have a reason to come. And I think this will be it. Um. And out of all the little pockets of restaurant areas all around Salt Lake County, downtown is really suffering. I get calls from our members quite often saying. What can we do, what can we do, what can we do? So I think this will bring more Utahns downtown. I think it'll bring more conventions and I think it'll bring more community of locals so we can uh congregate, so. I think it'll help the restaurants, thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be Bob Minton, followed by Jim Webster and then Ryan Fish. Bob, we may now end.
Yes, good evening, board, are you able to hear me well?
Yes.
Thank you for your time. My name is Henry Marini, many of you do not know me, but I guarantee you after this call today, you absolutely will. Let me tell you why I am vehemently against item number one. I'm coming to you from the great state of New York. And the reason why I'm against item number one is because the Smith Entertainment Group is primarily comprised of the Mormon Chomo Cult. And many of the lobbyists you saw before you're here today are specifically here to use this as yet another opportunity to line the pockets of the cult. I have been an active protester against Scientology, which is another Chomo Cult. That does the similar child trafficking and Chomo behaviors that the Mormon cult. Let me also tell you about one of the lobbyists that you saw today, Brandon Fugel. Who works for Ernst &amp; Young, I worked at Kodak as one of the lead people to transform Kodak Park. Ernst &amp; Young was the financial accounting company that we used. And I can tell you, they let a lot of nasty, nasty predatory behavior slide. Outright fraud was committed at that park, I've written extensively on it. And I have a lot of deep connections in Ernst &amp; Young, so Brandon asked about me, ask about Henry Marini. Okay, I want to also tell you about some of the other people that you might know in the public sphere that are associated with the Mormon Chomo Cult. One guy is Jerry Rig Everything, or as I like to call him, Jerry Grift Everything on YouTube, okay? Jerry worked for a lithium recycling company who I served as a lead engineer on. Where he went on YouTube and sold overhyped stock. Li cycle, L I hyphen cycle.
Ask you to take your comments and back to the topic, please.
This is absolutely on topic, this is why I'm explaining to you why I'm against item number one. And your city is overrun by a Chomo Cult. And I guarantee you, you will soon know my name and I will make my presence known there, thank you for your time.
I, yeah, thank you. Just gonna remind everybody, please to keep your comments respectful of other people, we talked about the discriminatory language, things like that. Please try to keep that in mind so that everybody can express themselves. Go ahead, Jim.
My name is Jim Webster, I live in District Six, I've lived in Salt Lake since nineteen seventy six, which of course coincident with the bicentennial. And as you all know, of course, Abrahanel Hall is one of the monuments and the most uh. Obvious one from that bicentennial. Contribution of the federal government. And I guess Capitol Theater is the other one, there may be others. But I think it's very important that we recognize that. Another thing you recognize is that. All of these years, Abrahanel Hall has been neglected in terms of deferred maintenance. I was on Ted Wilson's Budget Committee and that was a constant concern. Nobody seems to want to spend money to maintain, want to kick the can down the road. If we had maintained Abrahanel Hall, the two hundred million dollar question would not even be an issue. And so I'd like to make sure you understand that, I'd also like to uh. Try and emphasize the fact that we really don't seem to have a fail safe component to this proposal. Uh, Scottsdale is one city that, that has been talked about as uh, is missing a sports facility because. It's, it's whimsical, these people can come and go and really there's no guarantee. Is there a fail safe mechanism that will guarantee that the jazz will stay here if we spend this kind of money? What about Oakland, what about Detroit? Happens all over the country. And I think we need to be aware of that. Uh, I've spoken before about Cyril Harris. Abrahanel Hall absolutely cannot be replicated in any way, shape or form. I studied with Alio Baronic, who's a colleague of Cyril Harris at MIT. And that's just a fact, you cannot even consider. Modifying that facility, it just needs to be maintained, thank you.
Next will be Ryan Fish, followed by Karen Wyatt and then Troy Imamura. Ryan's here in person.
Hello, council, my name's Ryan Fish and I'm in support of this project, I'm a local business owner and we like. Many others are the collectors of this tax, so generally when there's a tax increase, we don't approve of it. But I don't know of another project that we've come up with that will support a fantastic vision. And a very clear way to invest in our future in this city and invest in our downtown. So I. Would just ask you to support this. Because it's very simple, this, our future depends on it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be Karen Wyatt, followed by Troy Imamura and then Michael Parker, Karen's here in person.
Good evening, my name is Karen Wyatt, I'm a Salt Lake City resident violinist with Utah Symphony and an elected representative of the Symphony Musicians. S E G's proposed Sports Entertainment Culture and Convention District has brought with it excitement about the potential for us to have our own hockey team and a way to reimagine the downtown experience. But it has also brought nearly half a year filled with uncertainty, constant anxiety about what the future of our organization will look like. Our efforts of advocating for our symphony and our hall have opened up an appreciation and a renewed love from and for our audience. Throughout this time, we have amassed a huge amount of supporters from state legislators and senators. City and county council members, their staff, local community leaders, current political candidates and scores of local Utahns. They have all joined in the collective chorus of preserving Abrahanel Hall, Utah's world-class concert hall. We're thrilled that S E G, Jenny Wilson and the Revitalization Zone Committee have all declared. Their desire and intent to keep Abrahanel Hall where it is as it is, with the expectation that informed thoughtful renovations will enable it to continue to serve as a beacon of cultural excellence in downtown Salt Lake. We hope that the city council will hop aboard this preservation train as well. I do want to point out that there are concerns about the project area that call the hall's management into question and consequently could affect our operations and performances. It is my hope that we can gain more clarification as to who exactly will operate and maintain the hall. If it's to be included in S E G's property lease. It's essential that all future discussions and negotiations involving lease agreements of the land or the hall itself ensure that Abrahanel Hall will continue to be the home and of the Utah Symphony. And prioritize its utilization so that myself and my colleagues can keep bringing top tier live orchestral music to our community, thank you.
Next will be Troy Imamura, followed by Michael Parker and then Ryan Ritchie. Troy's here in person.
Hi, everyone, my name is actually Trey Imamura. Uh, Troy Watanabe is our temple president at the Salt Lake Buddhist Temple. Um, I talked to him earlier this evening and we just wanted to extend our thanks for all, everything that's gone into this. And the work behind the sales tax and everything behind the scenes, meeting with people in our community. From the Buddhist temple to the next gen, to constituents who live in your area. Um, we just wanted to extend our thanks to you. Um, but to also make sure that going forward, we're clear that in the participation agreement, there are still these meetings that we're supposed to meet with. Not necessarily next gen group members, but our community members to make sure that they still have. That voice in the room at the seat of the table going forward. Um, but just in general, I want to voice my personal support. Um, I grew up in Salt Lake City and I saw crossroads close and gateway pop up and right now they're both in my perspective. Kind of dead areas and so. I have high hopes for this project that's right in the middle of those two sides of town and this is going to really. In, in my perspective, tie everything together. Um, and it just so happens that we have the Salt Lake Buddhist Temple and the Japanese Church of Christ. And Abrahanel Hall and Yumoka right there in the middle. And so I think this is a great opportunity to really tie our city together with some of the actual gems that we have in our city. So thank you all again for all your work and for all your time in listening to all our comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Will be Michael Parker, followed by Ryan Ritchie and then Barnes. Michael is here in person.
Good evening, council, thanks for a long, warm evening in here, it's fun to be in the council room. Uh, my name's Michael Parker, I represent the Utah Impact Partnership and appreciate the council's partnership on homelessness through the past nine months as we've worked towards. More shared solutions. The Utah Impact Partnership knows partnerships are hard, I can see how hard this council has worked to talk through these issues and I'm. I'm confident with long-term partnerships that their discussions are not over. I'm here to encourage you to continue those discussions with SEG. With the city, with the state, with partners like ourselves to make sure that we're holistic when we're thinking about generational investments. In our downtown, but we need, you heard from Natalie tonight about her five questions, I think those post. Efficacy, you know, with great efficacy of what you should be considering. But in our world, we need to know we have partners. Who focus not us on the fun, but also on our most vulnerable. And I think our business community has a legacy. A legacy from many that have spoken here tonight in support of this project and others that are not here. The Echoes Theater particularly stands out to me as something that is purely a public-private partnership where a legacy family stood in and said, we want to make downtown better. And so I would say to all of you, we hope there's partnerships on the other side of this vote that make our city better, not just this district better, but our city better. And I think that's your expectation as well and we look forward to working with you and SEG in the future to bring that to reality, so we hope for your support, thank you.
Next is Ryan Ritchie, followed by Barnes and then Julian Jerkwick. Ryan's here in person.
I used to not need reading glasses. Um, council, I'm just, I don't have a prepared statement, but. Um. I just want to just voice my support for what the S E G folks are doing, I know these things are. Difficult as you have so many different layers and different issues that get, get added into these discussions. Um, I'm an advocate of private public participations and partnerships like that, I am. I've seen that over and over again, this is a unique opportunity that uh, has been spoken of, by the time you get to the thirty fifth person, I think that's where I'm at. All the things have been said that need to be said. But I, I, I really like what Trey said when Trey mentions the Crossroads Mall issue. The Crossroads Mall, if ever, everybody remembers that was a time when Salt Lake City really became blighted. And we had some really difficult moments there and it wasn't until the LDS Church made that large investment. That it really kind of salvaged downtown Salt Lake City. And, and I think this is a similar issue where if the jazz were to pull out of downtown. And take both, you know, now two teams, which we're very fortunate to have two teams that we can talk about. If they're to pull out of downtown, the blight that would occur would have to be backfilled in some manner and that would be very difficult and be very expensive. And I want to remind everybody that not every city has an LDS church that has such a vested interest in maintaining the downtown. Um, I do think the LDS Church would step up eventually, as one person talked about the Olympics coming, but the Olympics last sixteen days. Um, you don't build billions of dollars worth of real estate for sixteen days, we have to build something lasting. I spent a great deal of time recently studying about the convention center and the impact it makes on, on downtowns and it's my opinion that you'll, you'll see a surge in real estate. Development if we make an investment of this kind of magnitude, I think it's a huge opportunity. To leverage off the four and a half billion we've already spent on the airport. And we're missing an opportunity to keep people downtown and I think that should be the focus of this is make it a vibrant place to work and. make it a vibrant place to work and live and use the public transportation and benefit everyone as a whole. Thank you.
Next will be Barnes, followed by Julian Jerkweiss, and then Ryan Beck. Barnes is here in person.
I speak today to humbly bring to the attention of our very esteemed, honorable Mayor Aaron Mendenhall and members of the city council, the sincere concerns that have been expressed to me by residents of Salt Lake. This is obviously a lovely project, positively lovely. However, many residents feel it is absolutely unconscionable to consider subsidizing billionaires with money that belongs to very hardworking Salt Lake residents. Sales taxes are meant for certain reasons, and lining the pockets of the very rich to make them very much richer might not be one of the things that would be included in that criterion for effective, moral, ethical, high-integrity use of sales tax or any kind of tax funds. I have nothing whatsoever against Smith Entertainment. I have people in my own family lineage with the last name Smith. And I do know that they are an organization that would likely provide an extraordinary building, an extraordinary complex. However, I don't think that Utah's 272 has to do with bricks and mortar so much as it has to do with the word revitalization. Revitalization has to do with refurbishment, rehabilitation. It has to do with human beings, less brick and mortar, more flesh and blood, something that really helps people. People don't come here for fancy buildings. If they want to see our wonderful culture, if they want to see our fabulous athletes, it's talent.
Thank you.
Next will be Julian Jerkweiss, followed by Ryan Beck, and then Rigo Ramirez. Julian's here in person.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for hearing us all tonight. Appreciate it. My name is Julian Jerkweiss. I am a proud resident of Salt Lake City and a member of the Board of Sweet Street Salt Lake City. Like many, I have mixed feelings about the Revitalization Zone, and I would hope you all do as well. It's clearly a contentious issue and an important one at that. Seeing as, in my opinion, the decision is all but made, I simply want to urge the council to take great care going forward with this project. In particular, I would urge that transit is a big part of this. This has the potential to be a great thing for our city, but not if the district is simply a destination for suburban Utahns to drive to, park, watch the game, and leave, all while clogging up and polluting our streets. Transit simply must be the best way to get to games and events at the entertainment district. We need people visiting Salt Lake City, not the arena, not a sports mall. With a focus on transit, we fill our streets with people and breathe life into them, people who stop at local restaurants, bars, and shops. Please keep in mind that the expansion of tracks, front runner, and the bus system are integral to making this project a success for the city overall. Things like better signal prioritization for tracks, dedicated bus lanes, and the Rio Grande Plan all need to be a huge part of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be Ryan Beck, followed by Rigo Ramirez, and then Emma Marshall. Ryan's here in person.
Thank you so much for letting me speak. I don't represent anybody. I'm just a resident of this town. I'm a small business owner. I live on Capitol Hill. And, you know, I think a lot of folks like me don't end up participating in meetings like this. 7:00 PM on a Tuesday, I got kids who've got to go to sleep and a small business I'm trying to keep afloat. And when I talk to my neighbors, everyone's excited about this. And I think there is, as is true of politics in America, the extreme voices are the loudest. And people who make a career out of political outrage are the ones who speak up to most of this stuff. And I just want to represent a different view, which is, I know the opponents of this present this as a sort of threat to the democratic process. We need to put it onto a ballot initiative and put it to the voters. And I'd actually suggest that this is one of the great, in a country that's totally broken and divided and partisan, this is one of the greatest examples of democracy working that I think I've seen in my lifetime, which is you have Stuart Adams in a right-leaning legislature who agrees with a left-leaning city council. You have a left-leaning arts community who has come out and forced tonight to endorse this next to a right-leaning business community. And you have stakeholders all through this district who showed up and forced tonight to say they want it. That doesn't happen in American democracy anymore. And it's happening on this. And I think it's a credit to the sponsors of this project. I think it's a credit to this council and the mayor. I think it's a credit to the legislature, that we have all the folks who represent all the folks have weighed in on this and said they want it. And I think that's pretty remarkable. I also just want to say that, you know, cities are like organisms. They grow or they shrink. They change or evolve or they die. I think that's real. I've been to cities that die and don't evolve. And I'd say if we accept that the city has to change, to those who oppose it, who else would you rather have do this than a billionaire who's from here who grew up playing junior jazz, who's in it for the long haul, not just for the money? What other process would you rather have than one that went through the legislature and the city and the county? What other funding source would you rather have than one that is 80% levied against people who are here for the entertainment and not the actual residents that doesn't affect groceries? I don't think this is just good. I think it's a gift to the community and I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Rigo Ramirez, followed by Emma Marshall, and then Eric Falchus. Rigo's here in person.
Thank you for the opportunity to, you know, speak tonight on behalf of this. My name is Rigo Ramirez. I'm a representative for the Local 801 Carpenters Union. And the reason why I'm here is I represent 1,200 members, of which 700 live in Salt Lake City, Utah. That's 700 families that will be affected by raising the taxes. Now, with that being said, you know, it was good. We promote construction. We love doing projects. We do everything. But we don't have an opportunity to work on those projects. It really hurts. It hurts our families. It hurts, you know, by the time you, general contractors get selected, then a subcontractor goes out to, you know, to bid and they put it out, and we don't get any of the work of that portion. They, it gets paid cash under the table, and you're right, tax fraud, cash pay under the table. Those people that get an opportunity to work on those projects, they don't pay any taxes. So for us, it's a huge burden, you know, for our families. And like I said, we promote, we support who supports us when it comes to jobs, wages, benefits. But it's got to be legitimate contractors, responsible contractors with good language that support a good apprenticeship for the future of, you know, our state and especially our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next will be Emma Marshall, followed by Eric Falchus, and then Monica Hilding. Emma's here in person.
Hi, my name is Emma Marshall, and I'm a Salt Lake City resident in District 5. As a lifelong hockey player and fan, I was excited at the prospect of a professional team coming to Utah. Hearing about the stadium renovation plan, I was also excited and curious about the local economic impacts of professional sports stadiums and the use of public subsidies to fund them. Luckily, there's no shortage of research on this topic. The many academic studies on this issue report a strong consensus that subsidies for professional sports stadiums do not translate to economic benefits for host cities. A 2022 paper reviewed many other studies on this topic and found that even taking into account non-monetary factors, such as the social benefits and civic pride associated with sports teams, in which I'm a huge believer, the economic and social improvements from sports stadiums are less than the public costs associated with them. And in addition, subsidies funding sports venues are not justified worthwhile, justified as worthwhile public investments. The results and examples from other cities supporting this conclusion are numerous. But two I will highlight here are that sports stadiums tend to shift economic activity rather than generating new spending, and two, that using sales tax increases as a mechanism to fund stadium construction is a highly regressive measure that disproportionately burdens lower and middle-income consumers. I appreciate and respect the role of the city council and their commitment to be mindful and accountable stewards of our tax dollars. Given what we know about the economic impacts of stadium subsidies, I would hope that the city council has data-driven answers for the public as to why they think that this subsidy will yield different results from all of the examples we have seen before. I believe it would be a concerning development for the city council to impose a tax increase that will socialize the cost of a sports stadium which generates profit for a private enterprise. I'd ask the council to vote.
Thank you. You can put the rest of your comments in an email and they'll be part of the public record. Thank you.
Next will be Eric Falchus, followed by Monica Hilding, and then JT Martin. Eric is here in person.
Hello. My name is Eric Falchus. I am a resident of District 6 and the owner of Baby's Bagels in District 4. First off, I wanted to thank you all for your work on behalf of the city and for this opportunity to speak. I strongly support public investment in Salt Lake City, but I have concerns about the proposed sales tax increase and participation with the participation agreement. Both as a small business owner and as a consultant for affordable housing developers, I'd like to share two key points. One is that research, as the speaker before me was saying, consistently shows that public investment in sports stadiums rarely yields positive returns for cities. I have no reason to believe that this investment would be an outlier. And two, that these funds, if used for other uses, would be transformative to other city goals, for example, affordable housing. Estimating that it costs about $350,000 to build an affordable housing unit in the city, and assuming that Salt Lake City covers about 20% of the construction costs, $900 million could potentially go towards affordable housing, which would yield about 13,000 affordable housing units. For context, Salt Lake City built approximately 11,000 homes, both market rate and affordable, between 2010 and 2020. 13,000 affordable homes over the next decade would be truly transformative to the city. So I urge the council to explore alternatives that offer more tangible, long-term benefits for all Salt Lake City residents. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Next will be Monica Hilding, followed by JT Martin, and then Kate Little. Monica, you may now unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Oh, great. Well, thank you so much for giving me the time to speak. And I appreciate so much. All of the people have taken time out of their busy schedules to come and speak, both for and against this revitalization of the downtown. I urge the city council to take time to consider this agreement. Cities change over time, but there are cities in the world that have been consistently inhabited for over 400 years, and their city streets have not been rebuilt. They were built right the first time with stone, and they're narrow. They're not making them wide for garbage trucks. They still have people picking up the garbage, that they employ people to do that. But that's a whole other story. I just want you to think about who this benefits. There are some very wealthy organizations, Mormon Church, and the billionaires who are pushing this, as well as restaurant owners, the Chamber of Commerce, business people in construction, not those who are getting paid under the table, but those. Anyway, I just really think that you need to think very carefully about who this benefits and our aggressive tax on those who can least afford it, who probably will not have the money to ever attend a jazz game or a hockey game. These are the people that you need to consider when you are considering this agreement and recognize that it's not fair to tax them for something that they probably will not have an opportunity to ever use. Thank you very much.
Next will be JT Martin, followed by Kate Little. JT, you may now unmute.
Good evening, Council and those who are attending. My name is JT Martin. I'm a former councilman representing District 6. I was a councilmember during the time of the Echols Theater, the mall that we are enjoying now. So many issues, the North Temple redo, the public safety building, these were big issues that we needed to get through. I urge the council to understand that it is an important job that they have to really get down, understand the details of this proposal. As far as saying that this subsidizes billionaires, I don't prescribe to that point of view. This tax is an investment that we're making along with them. I don't think anyone needs to argue or disagree with the fact that our city has many capital improvement needs. And we are only able to do that through the, through tax, sales tax and other kinds of sports taxes, which this will provide. Council, I know you've heard many times that these arenas and these things do not provide a positive income. I ask you to study this on yourself and to understand if that's true. To the Japanese community, you have had a horrible time. Your community was devastated and it was unfair and it wasn't right. I believe that this is the time that you have to regain the pride that you had. Never will you again have an opportunity to negotiate with those developers to make sure that your community and what you've contributed to this city and state are understood. And I truly believe that this is the time that you should take advantage of. Embrace this project.
Next will be Kate Little. Kate, you may now unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm a resident of District 3, and I'm opposed to this tax. I continue to have many unanswered questions about it. Tonight, you vote to impose a tax equal to $1.2 billion. Of this $1.2 billion, we know that 900 million or 75% is going to Smith Entertainment Group. And we don't know clearly who is getting the rest of the money, another $300 million, and what it can be spent on. So there's some questions I have, such as why has the tax sharing and reimbursement map in Exhibit 1A of the participation agreement been changed to now exclude the convention center? If a Bravinal Hall will be preserved, why does the new project area shown in Exhibit A2 still indicate that SEG will be leasing a Bravinal Hall? The maps have clearly been changed in a very substantial way after all the name of the district is the Sports Entertainment Culture and Convention District, but apparently it no longer includes the convention center. And we don't know why not. Many of us have been asking these questions of the city for months and are still awaiting answers. I urge you that you reject the resolution or at the very least, continue this public hearing to a future council meeting where we can get more specific answers to some of these questions as to exactly how the monies will be spent and how is a Bravinal Hall going to be preserved and how are we going to keep that preservation out of the hands of SEG? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will speak final register commenter for this item.
Hey, council members. We are, so unless there-
Chair, I'm going to have the council close the public hearing.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Petro to close the public hearing and a second from Councilmember Young. Any discussion to this?
I would just like to say thank you to everybody that took the time to comment today. This is very important and it's a necessary deliberation that all of us take seriously, certainly to all the constituents that have written in. So thank you.
Sorry, do we have, I think, one more person that wants to make, oh, did you? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll go ahead and since we haven't voted yet, I'm just going to pause your motion for a minute and take this last comment. And then, and then I also just want to clarify, so this is a little bit out of order. We're going to, the vote that would be on this will be later in the agenda because we typically would not vote on the same night, but we decided to hold another hearing tonight. So that's why. So it's, we'll be making the decision, but it'll be later in the meeting. So I just wanted to clarify that while you were coming up. And then I ended up taking way longer than it took you to get here. So.
You for allowing me to-
You for allowing me to speak. My name is Stephanie Irvin and I'm the owner of The Break Sports Grill. I am directly located across the street from the Delta Center. We opened in December of 2022. We have benefited greatly from the jazz games at the Delta Center, as well as the upcoming NHL and concerts. I just wanted to speak with the council today to make sure that as you move forward with this proposal, that you do not forget about the local businesses. My brother started The Break Sports Grill. He has three locations in Salt Lake and I am the first franchise. We are doing very well at The Break and I am very concerned about the impacts that the construction will have to my business, as well as I would like the council to consider and make sure that we are incorporated and that there is access to our business and that we are not shut off from the promenade. I think it's very important that we support local businesses in this and our pockets are not as deep as Ryan Smith. So I do have grave concerns about how we will make it through all these many years of construction. As many of you know, the Delta Center will stop operations for three summers from May until October. And so that will definitely impact our income. So I just ask that the city council does not forget about the small local businesses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments on this topic? Okay, we're gonna go back to the motion that was made by Councilmember Petro and seconded by Councilmember Young. Any further discussion to this item, recognizing that the vote will occur later on the agenda?
Chair, I believe you interrupted me, but yes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to.
I just wanted to reiterate and say again, thank you to everyone that took the time to come out and to every public hearing. We received your comments. We do read them. We listen diligently. And again, just to reiterate, this is not a decision that we make with haste, which is why we intended to have a public hearing today. That's my and my colleagues' commitment to transparency in this process and will continue to have these public discussions and include our neighbors, which is each of you. So thank you again.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I forgot you were in the middle. I was very distracted. So, all right, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and proceed to a vote on this. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono, excuse me, absent. We're gonna go to the next agenda item, which is B2. This is a grant application for Lead Hazard Reduction Program. Before we begin taking comments, I'm gonna turn the time over to Sylvia Richards, Council Policy Analyst, who's gonna give us a short introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight's grant is the Lead Hazard Reduction Program. And if approved, it would provide lead-based paint mitigation for exterior paint on windows, kitchen repairs, and other work from homes in Salt Lake City. And as a reminder, this is a grant for which the city has applied. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Any public commenters for this item?
Mr. Chair, there is no one registered to speak to this item.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council close the public hearing for items B2 to a future consent agenda for action.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Dugan and a second from Councilmember Petro. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono absent. That brings us to item number B3, which is an ordinance for North Point Light Industrial Zoning Text Amendment. Before we begin public comments, I'll turn the time over to Nick Tarbet, the Council Deputy Director, to give us a short introduction.
This public hearing is about the creation of the North Point Light Industrial M1A zoning district. The goal of the new zone would be to promote an environment for light industrial office and research uses while reducing the impact on adjacent agricultural and residential properties.
Okay, thank you. Public comment?
Hold on. My name is Denise Payne.
Yeah, let's wait till you recall your name. Just one second.
No, you have to wait.
Yes. The first will be Denise Payne, followed by-
Is that you?
And then Nicole Salt.
Okay, yes.
My name is Denise Payne. I live at 2848 North 2200 West and I have loved my house for so many years. But in the past four years, unfortunately, thanks to city council, we have been decimated with a million square foot buildings built across the street from us. And Dan, the last time I remember here, you said, when I told you I wanted to move, you said, "Oh, my gosh, that's not good. I need to go out there and see what's going on." Have you been out there yet?
So.
You have not been out there. Thank you. So, sorry. You should, and you should take a drive out there. All of you should see what Victoria has done to our street. We have a million square foot buildings built across from us on a two-lane road. And she told us three years ago that she was going to have M1 built behind us. I live on the east side. There's no M1 behind us. It's all agricultural and all residential. But she told us three years ago in a meeting with us that she was going to change it to M1. And now she's doing it. I can't fight it anymore. I don't care. I'm done. I'm ready to sell my house. I am so sick and tired of this. But you should see, you need to drive out there, Dan, and see what they have done to our road. We have semis racing up and down the street. We have cars racing up and down the street. And we have no police, no anything out there trying to take care of our residential community. You can't live out there where I live right now in a residential.
Fine.
Thank you.
Next is Cindy Cromer, followed by Nicole Salt. Cindy Cromer is here in person.
My name is Cindy Cromer. It was 24 months ago, October of 2022, that I watched the presentation on the North Point Small Area Plan and thought, this isn't gonna work. Then shortly after, in December, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to allow distribution uses setting up North Point to be an extension of the Inland Port. The mayor intervened to douse the recommendation of distribution uses in a maneuver that's not like anything I've ever seen in 40 years. Then 21 months ago, the residents on 2200 West woke up to a nightmare of pollution and construction. I thought, this would never happen east of State Street. We need little Knowles. It would be months before he arrived, months of dust, diesel exhaust, and truck traffic on a road never designed for what was happening. So fast forward to May of this year, you crafted a two-page development agreement in an attempt to contain a developer who wanted to argue about trees. So here we are. And here's what's still missing in the M1A zone, in my opinion. I told this to the Planning Commission. They ignored me completely. The draft ordinance for the Planning Commission does not specify which types of distribution uses are prohibited versus which types are included. Quote, wholesale distribution, end quote, is listed as a permitted use. How is a wholesale distribution use defined distinct from those in the Inland Port? It seems that this was an issue, must have been an issue in crafting that two-page development agreement. And what's the threshold to classify a use as distribution? Is it more than 50% of the activity in the business or more than 75% of the activity? And how would anyone know about non-permitted uses occurring inside these huge structures? Yes, I am talking about enforcement because we're dealing with developers who will argue about planting trees. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next.
If you could keep your applause to yourself. I think we've had a couple warnings about that, so I'm gonna have to ask you to leave next time, okay? Thanks.
And next is Nicole Salt, who's here in person.
I am a resident of the, on 2200 West. I actually found it fitting that Indigenous Day was part of today's meeting because there are people that are for the preservation of our land. Our land is one of our most precious resources. I feel, I actually know that our city has forgotten that. I've had to watch precious open lands destroyed when a million square foot building and 800,000 square foot warehouse was built on wetlands across the street from my house. The damage that has been done to my own personal property has yet to be repaired by these inconsiderate construction companies. I'm against the M1 zoning in order to destroy precious agricultural. I'm against the M1 zoning because it is destroying precious agriculture and residential property in my neighborhood. Just because the city spent over 100,000 on creating the North Point Small Area Plan doesn't mean that that plan is a good idea. Since construction across the street for the first time since I moved into my house over nine years ago, I am now scared to go and check on my stock in the dark. More industrial construction creates safety issues for not only my neighborhood, but for the west side. And the city has kind of, we have forgotten the west side. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That was the final registered commenter for this item.
Thank you. I'll look for a motion.
I move that the council close the public hearing and defer action to a future meeting.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Petro and a second from Councilmember Poi. Any discussion?
I would actually like to, since we typically don't allow people to be called. And we didn't observe that. I'm gonna take the opportunity that while I would love to be as powerful as I'm being given credit for, the entitlement of the land that gave us the 1 million square foot warehouse is the problem that this new text amended zone is responding to. There was a business park zoning out there that allowed for absolutely abusive practices that were put into place under the previous administration and that the deferment of the small area plan allowed to go on. This text amendment prevents anything of that scale from happening and through architectural design prevents the sort of cross-loading that will promote exclusively truck traffic. There was nothing to be done about that and it is the cautionary tale that I throw in front of everyone. In fact, you all heard me today say that Business Park is a terrible outdated exploitive zone that should be eliminated because of what happened in my district. This is a correction that will prevent it from ever happening. And while one commenter is correct that the nuances of tree placement and things like that are still up for us to decide, this prevents the proliferation of trucks and PM 2.5 directly into people's neighborhoods. It's accompanied by an annexation request that will finally facilitate the building of 2900 West and remove trucks from 2200 West, which was a grievous oversight that we could not go back and reclaim because Business Park was an entitled zone for that landowner and allowed them to do what they did. Had the previous administration not put my predecessor's request for a small area plan at a lower priority, had COVID not stopped the progress on it, we could have been better positioned to avoid it. We were not. I have learned the lessons of it and my only promise to constituents has been to learn the lessons. I am done explaining to people who either can't or won't understand the certainties and truths here, but that is a clearing of the record and I will not be discussing it further with those who only wish to hear a distorted version.
Thank you, Councilmember Petro. Just discussion-wise on this, I know this is something that you worked really hard on and that a lot of this, what we're seeing right now is the byproduct of existing zoning, not of the zoning change that you've been working on. So I appreciate you bringing that issue up. And also just, oh, any other discussion on this item? Yes.
I want to echo and say thank you to Councilmember Petro, who has a capable and unwavering commitment to her district. Again, I just want to reiterate, there are protections such as a no-development buffer from the Jordan River that's really critical and important in this, and it doesn't automatically rezone the whole district. It actually allows the private property owners to opt into it. So there's optionality. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you so much for allowing me. This I wasn't planning on speaking. But I joined the council at the same time, well, about a month later than Councilmember Petro. And I had the chance and opportunity to spend a lot of time with Councilmember Petro. And if there is one thing that you know about her within five minutes is how much she fights for our communities. And she will never stop talking about the issues that are affecting us. So I thank you for working these hard things. They're never easy to solve. And sometimes making good on something that has happened in the past and trying to amend policies of the past have effects. But I appreciate you and I learn a lot from your resilience to fight for our neighbors. So thank you so much, Councilmember.
Any other discussion to this motion? Okay, and then we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono absent. We will move on to the next portion of the agenda. That is item B4, an ordinance amending the zoning map at approximately 450 East, 700 South. Before we begin, I'm gonna turn the time over to Brian Fulmer, Council Policy Analyst, to give us a short introduction. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a proposal to amend the zoning map for the property you mentioned in Council District Four from its current RMF 35, which is moderate-density multifamily zoning, to RMF 30 or low-density multifamily. The petitioner stated objective is to develop unused portions of the property with two additional homes. An existing home on the property is proposed to remain.
Thank you. We'll go to the public comments for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is no one registered to speak to this item.
All right, and then I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council close the public hearing and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lopez Chavez and a second from Councilmember Dugan. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono absent. We are now at item B5 on the agenda. This is an ordinance that would amend driveway and loading area standards. And before we take public comment, I will turn the time over to Brian Fulmer again to give us a short introduction.
This is a proposal from the administration regarding driveway and loading area standards found in City Code Parking Chapter. Planning staff found that some standards created unintended consequences. They worked with the Transportation Division to correct the issues while addressing vehicular needs and support good urban design principles.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to the public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is no one registered to speak to this item.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to get the council to up the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Dugan and a second from Councilmember Petro. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono absent. We are now at B6, yeah. Yeah, B6, which is an ordinance for the Monument Signs and Manufacturing District Text Amendment. Before we begin taking public comment, I will turn the time over to Brian Fulmer to give us a short introduction.
This is a request to amend the zoning ordinance related to monument signs in the M1 and M2 manufacturing districts found in city council districts 1, 2, and 3. Currently, the ordinance allows one monument sign per street frontage regardless of length. The request is to allow additional signs. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Poi.
I would like to move that the council close the public hearing and adopt the ordinance. I would like to move that the council close the public hearing and adopt the ordinance.
Okay, let's wait and see if we have any commenters first.
You're right. We need to hear that first.
Um, are there any commenters to this item?
No, there is no one registered to speak to this item.
Okay, well, I know someone's anxious to make a motion, so.
Second.
Uh, I'll just count that as made and seconded. So a motion from Councilmember Poi, a second from Councilmember Dugan. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono absent. We are now at item B seven, which is a text amendment to prohibit demolition of dwelling units for parking users or uses. And before we begin taking comments, I'll turn the time over to Brian Fulmer, Policy Analyst, to give us a short introduction.
This is a continued public hearing on a proposal from the administration to prohibit demolition of housing units to develop standalone parking facilities. It also prohibits demolition of dwellings to expand parking facilities if the result is a net loss of housing units. The proposal would allow expansion of residential and commercial developments to add units while increasing parking, provided there is not a net loss of dwelling units.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll go ahead and go into public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are three people registered to speak to this item. The first will be Jane Doe, followed by Julian Jerkweiss, and then Monica Hilton. Jane Doe, you may now unmute.
Yes, I just want to make sure you don't become like Los Angeles. Uh, where it's, you know, now they're on the opposite end. There's no parking. So I appreciate that you're trying to provide parking for the city. But, um, you know, dealing with housing thing, but when you're dealing with parking structures, you have to be careful. Because people think that because it's parking, you don't have to worry about it. In LA, we're having like a really serious difficulties with one parking structure. Um, you know, it's owned by the Church of Scientology and they're doing a lot of illegal, um, non-permitted um, construction on it. So just because it's a parking structure, okay, doesn't mean that the city, um, you know, that it that it's nothing and that no one has to worry about it. With that, I yield the rest of my time and can you just take me off of everything except for a public comment? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next.
Next will be Julian Jerkweiss, followed by Monica Hilton. Julian is here first.
Good evening again, Council. Thank you for hearing us. My name is Julian Jerkweiss and I'm a proud resident of Salt Lake City and a board member of Sweet Street, Salt Lake City. I'd like to speak strongly in support of this ordinance. As we all know, the best way to combat housing affordability issues such as they have in Los Angeles is more housing. Uh, we are desperate need of this. And if you look around Salt Lake City, we have far too much parking already. Uh, anybody can see that. I would urge you to approve this motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be Monica Hilton. Monica, you may now unmute.
I, um, I will second all that he just stated and um, encourage again the council to think about the Rio Grande Plan, which you mentioned in an earlier comment. Um, but yes, destroying homes to build parking lots is is so wrong. So wrong. So I think this is a great idea and I hope that it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Final registered commenter for this item.
I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council close the public hearing and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Dugan and a second from Councilmember Lopez Chavez. Any discussion to this?
Mr. Chair, I just want to echo some of the comments I heard. District Four in particular is made up of thirty percent surface asphalt covered parking lots and we have suffered at the demolition of deeply affordable and naturally occurring housing that has then in turn been turned into more surface covered parking lots. This is a downtown that is thriving and needs urban development. I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono absent. We are now at item B eight, which is an ordinance for citywide text amendment for gas station standards. Before we begin taking comments, I'll turn the time over to Brian Fulmer to give a short introduction. Oh, hold on. Okay.
This is a continued hearing on a proposal from the administration to amend the zoning ordinance to require a minimum distance new gas stations must be from rivers, streams, or other water body and parks or open spaces in the city. It would also prohibit new gas stations that do not meet the proposed standards. Thank you.
Thank you. And public comment?
There is one person registered to speak to this item. That will be Julian Jerkweiss, who is here first.
Thank you, Council. Keep it quick. I just want to say I'm strongly in support of this one as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council close the public hearing and defer action to a future council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Young, a second from Councilmember Dugan. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, then it passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono absent. We'll go to item B nine, which is an ordinance amending the budget, the Budget Amendment Number One for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Before we begin taking comments, I'll turn the time over to Ben Ludkey for a short introduction. Thanks.
This is the second public hearing for Budget Amendment Number One for two new items that were added. Those are four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for governmental immunity claims and fifty thousand dollars for economic promotion in the Sugar House Business District. It's also worth noting that the economic promotion will be highlighting the upcoming pause in road construction in the Sugar House Business District, which is slated to begin on November fifteenth through the end of December. The updated staff report and the administration's revised proposals are in today's meeting packet. And the council budget webpage is updated throughout the year where you can find the latest information at tinyurl.com forward slash S L C F Y twenty five. Thanks.
Thank you, Ben. Public comment?
There is no one registered to speak to this item.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council close the public hearing and adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty five final budget of Salt Lake City, including the employment staffing document only for items as shown in the motion sheet.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Young and a second from Councilmember Petro. Um, any discussion? Councilmember Young, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say I really appreciate the wholehearted support I received from every single council member. We know that the businesses in the Sugar House area are under duress related to the construction. We know the residents are too. Um, and we need to see more solutions in that area. This asked today is a product of the Sugar House Chamber, the Sugar House Community Council, the mayor's administration, and the construction project teams coming together to create that solution as a community. I am very proud of every single individual for having a voice in this process. And if I can just encourage every single one of you to shop in Sugar House, that is how I'd like to end my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other discussion to this?
I just want to thank Councilmember Young, who's just a stark advocate of the Sugar House community. I have many friends that have local businesses there that have been in distress, but you have been their savior and their voice. Uh, also, just to remind my colleagues, we have many capital improvements and construction projects ahead of us. We need to consider policies and funding and mechanisms to help the distress and the revival of these small businesses. They are the life, breath, and pulse of Salt Lake City. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono absent. Our final issue is B ten, which is the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six U.S. Housing and Urban Development General Community Development Needs uh, annual public hearing. Uh, before we begin comments, I will turn the time over to Ben Ludkey from City Council to give us a short introduction. Ben.
The four grants the city receives from the Housing and Urban Development Department are some of the largest ongoing federal funding that is received by the city. HUD requires the city to hold two public hearings each year as part of this funding. One is held in the fall, which is what we're doing today. It is for community input on general needs. The other public hearing is held in the spring when the council is considering specific funding awards to projects and programs. There is nothing for the council to adopt today. Only holding the public hearing is required. In the spring, the council will have a new five-year consolidated plan guiding the use of those four HUD grants as well as specific funding recommendations for how to use the funds in the first year under the new plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
There is no one registered to speak to this item.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council close the public hearing.
Hold on. Looks like we have a hand raised. Would you like to come and make a comment on this item? Sure, come on down. Thank you. If you just state your name again.
My name is Julian Jerkweiss. I just was reading this and I'd like to just make a general comment about, um, housing in the city. I think something I'd like to see, uh, and I think many residents would like to see especially, um, is and we've we've moved towards this recently with the um, upzoning of single family houses to allow for more development on those. I'd like to see more trending in that direction where homeowners such as myself can provide more housing, you know, where it's not just these huge, you know, three hundred unit cookie cutter apartment blocks where we have lots of space within the city where we can increase density and make, you know, transit and walkability, bikeability better. So if we can, whatever we can do in that direction, I would like to see more of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
I have a very quiet motion from Councilmember Dugan and a second from Councilmember Petro. Um, any discussion to this? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono absent. Phew, okay, we have made it to section C of the agenda. Um, and, uh, let's see, we're going to take these out of order and do C two first uh, to make the necessary amendments to the D one zone and then we will come back to C one. So, starting with item C two, this is an an ordinance that would amend the zoning text for the D one central business district zone. Is there anyone here to speak to this? Okay.
Sorry.
I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council adopt the ordinance.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lopez Chavez and a second from Councilmember Dugan. Any discussion?
Uh, I'm excited. May I?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say to the applicants, I'm very excited to invite you to continue to engage with our community. Intermountain Healthcare is going to create its urban hospital here in Salt Lake City and has chosen that intentionally. Uh, and thank you to the many outbound services. I've repeated this. District Four uh, is one of the greatest users of intake outbound services for mental health and other resources that the nonprofit hospital provides. So I'm very excited to work alongside all of you uh, in ensuring the success of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, then that passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono absent. We'll now go back to item C one, which is an ordinance amending the zoning map at approximately seven fifty four South State Street. This would rezone nine acres located at approximately seven fifty four South State Street from D two or Downtown Support District to D one Central Business District and will require the applicant to enter into the development agreement attached to the ordinance. I will look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council adopt the ordinance subject to the applicant executing the development agreement attached to the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lopez Chavez and a second from Councilmember Dugan. Any discussion to this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, again, thank you to the applicant for uh, being willing to enter into this development agreement. It's not often easy as an applicant to come to the table on this, but you chose to not just resurrect the old Sears Lake, but also to listen to the constituents, many businesses that are involved in this process and to listen to my colleagues and I and our concerns. So thank you again for being so steadfast and earnest in this development. I'm excited to have you in the center of Old and Downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Poi.
Thank you very briefly. I, uh, this is sometimes from complicated uh, and sometimes, uh, at times, uh, difficult discussions, uh, good projects come to life. Um, and it is very impressive to me uh, that, uh, we have been able to meet someplace, uh, to be able to both accomplish the goals of, uh, an urban hospital and at the same time, uh, make sure that we activate uh, major streets in our in our city. Uh, with seventy nine percent activation on State Street um, and seventy percent activation on Main Street, uh, I think that this, uh, urban hospital will be a success. Uh, and it might actually, uh, prove to, uh, the applicant that they can actually build uh, urban hospitals, uh, that, uh, embrace the community around them too. Uh, so I am very excited to see this project. Uh, I'm very excited to, uh, to, uh, see it grow. And I hope they don't resurrect the Sears Lake. I hope they actually build a beautiful, uh, urban hospital there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Poi. Councilmember Young.
So tonight's theme is hard fought victories. And so I just have to really thank, um, both our partners at IHC for sticking with us here in Salt Lake City. Um, I know it hasn't been always a smooth and easy ride, but I look at where we are and what the plans are for the future. And I really do think we arrived at a good solution that makes sense for the entire community. So thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed to the vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that is passes unanimously with Councilmember Mono absent. We are now to the comment portion of the agenda, um, which starts with questions, um, from the City Council to the mayor. Jill Love, the mayor's chief administrative officer, is attending tonight on behalf of Mayor Mandon Hall. Jill, thank you for being here. Any council, any questions for Jill from the council? All right, no. Then we will now go to the general comments portion of the agenda. This is a one hour time slot for the for public comments on any city business not related to a general public or to a specific public hearing. Each person will have two minutes to talk. General comment registration closed at seven thirty. Before we take, uh, comments, we'd like to emphasize again the rules. No disruptive threatening behavior, creating unsafe environments, anything like that will not be tolerated. Um, we also do a reminder that we have to please direct your comments to the full council, not to individual council members. And, um, I am just going to skip the rest of these reminders because I think we're think we're all good on that. So Kayla, first public comment?
We have six people registered for general comment. The first will be Jane Doe, followed by Scott Johnson and then Chanille H. Jane Doe, you may now unmute.
Good evening. Um, you know, public count, public comments usually at the beginning of the meeting. Otherwise, you are possibly excluding, uh, people with young children who need to be home. That being said, I am here to talk about safe pointing. Safe pointing is something that the Church of Scientology does. It ingrains itself and it attaches itself at the very deepest, um, levels in in a city, police, fire, public works. The where it gets so much, um, leverage that they basically get away with what they want. To compare in the city of Los Angeles and Hollywood in particular, the Church of Scientology has gotten five months' worth of closing the street for endless permits, uh, for parties that never happen. They're required to have an emergency lane open. Um, they don't, uh, and no one's going to challenge them on it, even though we do constantly. No one cares. They get, they're so safely pointed, the fire signs off on it. They have endless. They have three blocks' worth of planners that are not ADA compliant. And again, even though the city told them they need to move it, they're not and nobody's going to challenge them on it because, you know, they're so safely safe pointed. They have unpermitted construction. They have they use their own people who make $47 a week to vacuum and polish the street. And I'm not kidding you. They vacuum and polish the street. That's illegal, by the way, when you're working on a public because it's a public street, not private. They, you know, they're required to pay minimum wage. And again, everything, everyone looks the other way. And then if anyone comes and protests as human abuses, then the city attorney will come and put bogus charges on you. You will risk going to jail for a year for something so stupid that they would never charge anyone with. So that's what safe pointing is. Be careful because it's coming to your city with the org near you.
Next will be Scott Johnson, followed by Chanil H., and then Debbie H. Scott is here in person.
Hi, thank you again. My first comments were admittedly very academic, so I wanted to try to paint a picture of my friend Luis. Luis is 20, the son of immigrants, lives on the outskirts of the city. And despite being whip-smart, Louis didn't do great in high school. So far, he's spent one not very successful semester at Slick, and international soccer is the only sport Louis follows. Not really into the major U.S. pro sports leagues. Louis works two jobs, the first one making $8 an hour as a barista at Beans and Brews just outside the city. Being exhausted after a long day of work, he regularly stops at McDonald's to get something to eat after work. McDonald's, being a savvy company, understands microeconomics. So they have a value meal. They realize when they raise prices, it affects demand. So Louis knows exactly how much he needs, Louis, sorry, knows exactly how much he needs to buy his value meal at McDonald's. Louis now starts working a second job at the Monte Carlo as a bellhop downtown. Making $9 an hour, he's working at night a second job to help make ends meet. Being hungry after work, he stops at McDonald's, and he knows he has a $5 bill in his back pocket and exactly enough change in his tray to get that value meal. He drives to the drive-thru, doesn't have enough. It's more in Salt Lake City. Not much more, but it's more. Is he going to come back again, or next time is he going to finish driving out to West Valley City? If he does, you lose all of that money. It goes outside. It's something that's actually easy to measure if you have the data. One other scenario, oh, and I just wanted to note that there's someone else who understands microeconomics, I think, pretty well, and that's S E G, because they recently announced that for Louis's same $5, you can now get a $2 bottle of water and a $3 popcorn instead of whatever outrageous prices they were before. They understand supply or price and how it affects demand as well. So this is something that can be measured if you're willing to take the time and provide the data.
Thank you.
Next will be Chanil H., followed by WH, and then Mona M. Chanil is here in person.
All right, council members, I want you to look at my sign. This is what I hold outside of Scientology. You know what I scream? It's okay to be gay. Why? Because I'm gay. I'm a degraded being outside of Scientology. Anybody who has any mental illness is, any kind of deformities, anybody who is gay, anybody who has a mental illness, you are a degraded being. You are not allowed on their property. You are not allowed to stand there. You are not allowed to be around them. Let me tell you a story about Serge Oblinsky. He was a young child at the age of 14. He blew off his hands in a firework accident, and his mother was told to take him away and leave him somewhere. She took him to a home, got him on social security, and she left him. At 15 years old, he was left to be on his own with his social security. He has been, and he was disconnected from his family. He is now 40 years old, and he has the mindset of a 16-year-old. And he has been on his own since. He was on the streets in L.A. for 12 years before somebody seen him. We need to take a stand as a community. We need to stop the child abuse, stop the trafficking. We need to revoke their tax-exempt status. Just because they're a religion doesn't mean that they have the power to do this to our children. Mind I add, I was just up there. They were, three girls came out and were told to cut off their hands and stop taking their medications. Do something.
Next will be Debbie H., followed by Mona M., and then Julian Jercois. Debbie's here in person.
All right, when the two towers fell in New York, only one man knew exactly what to do. He jumped in his airplane and he flew out to New York to convince well-educated public servants about how to purify their systems after the 9/11 accident. Many people were very sick from the towers. This man is Tom Cruise. He has no education, no medical background, no anything other than he's a star. And he is with Scientology. That's it. He took the Scientology technique, which is the purification rundown. You all got a copy of it. And that purification rundown was used on our first responders with no background in what it was, no understanding of how dangerous it is. The niacin in one pill, and they take these pills for 30 days. The niacin is 10 times higher than normal dose. This makes it a toxic poison. I want you to understand that the first responders were getting a toxic poison. In 2007, Mark Shortliff brought into a service, bought into this service, and he gave $50,000 to Scientology unknowingly to help our first responders that had been in meth labs. Why didn't he know that it was Scientology? Because the woman that started the company called it Heroes Health Project and Utah Meth Cops Project. These are fronts for Scientology. Mark Shortliff signed up all of the police to go and take this toxic dose. I don't know if you guys are aware of how much Scientology actually is involved and is participating in our community.
Next will be Mona M., followed by Julian Jercois. Mona, you may now unmute.
Thank you, council members. What are we demonstrating really as First Amendment rights? Please listen to this true scenario. Confessional sec check. It's a 12-year-old counseling a grown man. A sec check is because something went wrong in your life and you are trying to discover what you did currently or in a past life to make it happen. The prelude to this confessional, these words are spoken to a grown man, and I quote, "We are about to begin an HCO confessional. While we cannot guarantee you the matter revealed in this list will be held forever secret, we can promise you faithfully that no part of it nor any answer you make here will be given to the police or the state. No Scientologist will ever bear witness against you in court." Here are some actual questions, and I quote, "Have you committed a crime? What, where, when, how? Give details." This is a child asking a grown man. "Have you masturbated? How, what, where, when? Give details." "Have you eaten a body?" Same. How, when, where? Give details. Sadly, the child asking this grown man must know what these words mean, even the masturbation word. Oh, my gosh. Remember, grown men are told every time that the crimes are not going to be told to the police, and the grown man is locked in a room with that juvenile. A man and a child, that's just shameful. All sessions are written about, taped, and videoed, every single one. Abuses such as these go on daily behind those walls. Children and survivors are not allowed to report to the police. It is a high crime. The doctrine and policy was recorded in court proceeding at the Masterson trial. These abuses need to stop. Kids cannot consent. I yield back my time."
Next will be Julian Jercois, who's here in person.
Good evening, council. My name is Julian Jercois. I have a pretty simple request, I think. I live on one of the blocks nearby 600 South, 500 South, and 800 East. And I would like to request that some thought or consideration be given towards putting four-way stops on those intersections between 800 East and 500 and 600 South, east of 700. They're very difficult streets to cross, whether it be on a bike, on foot, or on car. The crosswalks are there, but they're not respected. People, it's genuinely a scary thing to try and cross. And beyond that, living on one of the affected streets, the speed limit is not even remotely respected there. It's, people are just flying up and down the streets constantly. I don't have any kids, but I wouldn't want to have kids running or playing out in front of that street because they are going so quickly there. I think a stop, a four-way stop would go a long way to reducing speeds there, as well as making it easier to cross the street when you are traveling on 800 East, whether you are in a car, on a bike, or on foot. So that is my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the final registered commenter.
All right. And that concludes our public comment, our general public comment for the evening. We are now on section E of the agenda, which is new business. Item E one is a resolution, the Capital City Revitalization Zone, Final Participation Agreement, Final Project Area, Project Participation, Project Participant Designation. And then item E two, which is a separate item, an ordinance on the Capital City Revitalization Zone imposing a 0.5% citywide sales and use tax. I will refer the council members to the motion sheet. And again, even though these are listed on one motion sheet, I want to make it very clear that these are two separate legal actions and will require two separate votes.
Mr. Chair, sorry to jump in, but I think the city attorney has some clarifying information, just maybe before you guys consider your motions, if that's okay.
Oh, okay. Great.
Hi, council members. I just wanted to bring to your attention that the participation agreement that is up for consideration as the final document, if you access it through Prime Gov, if you click on it, the exhibits don't show some of the blue coloring that show the project area and the full blocks east of the Delta Center that S E G is intending to develop as their cultural sports convention and art district. The reason I raise that is
Okay, guys, I turned off the meeting. They're just going to do Yes, that is Crazy Love is Love. Oh, no, that is another streamer that protests out with Crazy Love is Love, and I can get her name. I don't, I know she told me, but I can't remember what her name is. But I'll find it out and tell you next time. But yeah, I think we hit them on all angles on this one. Henry smacked them with the economic part, audit, Crazy Love. I think her name is, no, I don't remember what her name is. I'm sorry. Deb, okay. Yeah, that was a pretty good meeting. I know we had to wait forever with all of the sales tax fiasco. Oh, I'm always scared. My hands are sweating. I don't care how many times you talk in front of people, you always get scared. I honestly write things down, and then I read it off from off from a paper or off from a Word document. Because if I don't, I always forget what I was going to say. Okay, you guys, so tomorrow is going to be a busy day for Public Works. I think we all need to hammer them at Public Works in L.A. tomorrow. And I think they took my challenge to heart the other day when I said, you know, you could put 50 items on the list, and I'm still going to wait and make us because usually they have public comment first. And I said, you could make us wait all 50 because the children were just way too important. The abuse that's happening is just way too important. So I will be here even after 50. I think they have 23 things on the freaking agenda tomorrow morning. That's what I get for mentioning anything. Okay, you guys, I need to go figure out who got sprayed by the skunk. And love you all. Thank you for hanging out with me. Good night.